Is Brent Warner, is that her?
Couldn't be.
Hello? Okay. All right, when she reached, so I'm gonna share the agenda. Since we have a quorum with two, I'm gonna share the agenda which is on the screen. I hope everybody can see it. This is the town of Blainsburg Board of Elections Supervisors meeting for January 3rd, 2024. As I just noted that the chair is not able to make it. She did send her apologies and I believe that we're still waiting on Mr. Joyner. Would, um, can we, I'd like to have someone act as the chair if they can start the agenda to call the meeting to order. Who wants to do it? I can't see anybody on my screen, so, because I have the thing up. I guess what I could do is I can, we can let everybody know who's present. There are three, I believe, board member Lundie is here. And then Board Member Sanders, I believe you're here as well?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, great. Um, the item that we have as our second item is the approval of the minutes. Because these are recorded meetings, you don't necessarily have to approve the minutes. I didn't see that this was on here. Your recordings can serve as your minutes, but we did send the information to you. So we just sent out the December minutes. Just so that you have written minutes as well as recordings and we'll keep both online. But you don't necessarily have to approve them because you're, because as the state law changed from the standpoint that recorded meetings can act as minutes and actually they're more accurate than necessarily the minutes. We don't miss anything. So if you would like to approve minutes, you can, but you don't necessarily have to because again, the recording can act as your minutes.
Okay.
Okay. If that's okay, I just want, I wanted to let you know that because I feel like the, these recordings are probably much more accurate than the minutes. But you've got the recordings that you can, I mean, you've got the, the notes so that you can have them just so that if you need to go through it, that you have the information on what we have written down as staff. The next item was the review of the internal procedures from College Park. That information was sent out to the board, I guess it was actually maybe a few weeks ago. How they do their things with the processing of applications, the receiving, scanning, the application collection log, the ballot collection log, the collection of the ballot box and P O boxes, the election manual like which you've reviewed before, the oath of, um, the ballot oath envelope and the election return envelopes. That's really that main discussion of today is on those things. Are there any things that you, that the board wants to dive into in regards to some of the things that we were collecting from College Park?
Well, just from looking at everything, this is a lot of information. And a lot of information. And are we open to breaking this down and have meetings of all the sections? And also I wanted to ask, are we open to looking at another municipality?
Yeah, I think so. I, I, I think that the one thing that we wanted to get you is we've asked other municipalities for their samples. They have not been as responsive. With the new clerk, once that person is hired, the new town clerk is hired, that person will actually review these and actually come up with draft policies. I think what we wanted to do was to provide the, the board with a place to start with, especially because it's so close and it's locally. I think that a lot of the smaller municipalities in the area are not. There's 27 municipalities within Prince George's. And I'd say there's probably four, five that might have actual policies. Everyone else is probably doing it catch as catch can for the, for this, for this process. They've got maybe, they don't have anything as well documented. We sent out a request M M L. They basically replied to me saying, if you get stuff, can you send it to us? So we didn't get a lot back. I sent that out back in November when you first asked for it. We can continue to ask and find out if everybody else has stuff. But I also think that once the new clerk starts, they will be able to maybe review this and draft up information for you. I just wanted to make sure that you all were, I thought that from looking at it, we had some really good places to start with, especially from the standpoint of what we were looking at as processing applications, the receiving and scanning of securing of ballots in particular. And then the logs that they're using for the collection and things like that. I think those processes are pretty sound. And what we can do is maybe adopt them or I mean, you know, put together our own pieces. So what we can do as staff is bring that back to you. But I just wanted to give you time if there was any questions regarding, and if there was any more things that you wanted us to ask about from that information that was sent.
I didn't have any questions. Um, I did appreciate you sending all of this, so that was very helpful. I did like the specificity around the application collection log and where people were actually collecting them from. I thought that that was extremely helpful. And then I also felt that the handbook, it definitely describes the role of the people that are on the Board of Supervisors for elections. I thought that that Board of Elections Supervisors, I thought that that was also very helpful for their specific duties. And I think that that is needed.
Yeah, I appreciate that because that's what, I think what we can do is maybe bring back something in the next couple of months. Once that person, once the new clerk starts and has something that's tailored to this, to the town of Blainsburg, that sort of deals with these things in that, I mean, that, that kind of starts to separate it out as we need them. So yeah, that's helpful.
Yes. And what would be helpful also is if, at least helpful for me and maybe for my colleagues on the board, if we could get your timeline of when we need to complete our review of all of this or whatever else you give us that's gonna help us to get things in order. So we can know, you know, where we are and how soon we need to complete certain things. Because right now I just feel like I'm going and I don't want to get to the point where we haven't done what we need to do, but yet we have an election coming up. And next year, very soon.
Twenty twenty-five.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's right around the corner to be honest with all the deadlines. So I would like to have a timeline of the deadline and the dates of when you want, when your expectation to have things to be done. Like going over all of this, how, you know, what is the timeline for when we're gonna start to when you want us to be finished with it and when it could be implemented? And do you know of a date when the clerk is gonna come on board? You have anticipation of that?
Yes. We, I put out the, I put out the, the application process. The, I put out the, the posting. It's due by the end of February, by the middle of February. I've already gotten candidates. We'll start interviewing, I'm actually gonna start preliminarily interviewing in the next couple of weeks for that position. So we, I hope to have the person on by the first week in March by the latest. And so I, I think the one issue that, I mean, with the timeline, I do have, we do have an idea because we were able in our conversation with College Park. I think the one nice thing that they do is they do have a revolving calendar and they have a timeline. And I know I've taken some notes on that. So I have, we have sketched it out. I can give you all more of a timeline of when some of these things will be due. As far as when we're, you know, as far as putting together some of these policies and what my expectations of the clerk, the new clerk will be to get those policies done. So it's not that we don't have them. I think more of the issue is that within this month was more providing you with the information that we've collected so far, kind of getting that information to you. Because what we can do is we can organize it and say, and I think that'll be, I mean, that will be the job of the new clerk. Just organize it and say, okay, first the processing, the application and the election handbook will be done. We need to get that done by the summer, you know, and some of these policies will need to be done by August 1st. We'll have the ballot, you know, the, what the, in looking at the information for what the applications will be for the next election cycle will be done by X date. From talking with the clerk in College Park, they, they pretty much wrap up most of this process by the fall of the year before. So October, November is the timeline that they use to do review all of their policies and procedures in between the election. So that most of these policies would have to be finalized by the board by the fall. And then as we're moving through the early spring, the application process itself would be reviewed again. For, you know, and the candidate, the candidate information would be finalized by early, by, you know, by the beginning of early next year so that applications are out early in the budget and in the, in the cycle. And that we would try to get a jump on the applications for new candidates in this, before the spring so that everything is out there. So the candidates can, you know, turn in their information. You know, that it can be readily available. So it's not, so we're not on a, on the same deadline. I think there's, there are some timelines that are mandated. You know, as far as the application process and accepting them, my, my, my understanding of it, and that's what we'll be going through with the, our town attorney to make sure that we're in line with those. But as you're saying, you know, Board Member Lundie, I think what we want to do is just as a rough, as a rough timeline for you, you know, trying to get through these policies and collection logs by the end of the, you know, getting through most of this stuff by the end of the, by the end of the year, you know, by the end of this, by the, by November, October, November. And then moving towards making sure that all of the candidate information is, you know, is done by early February, because I just think things may change. I want to wait till the end of the session is over and I want to make sure there's nothing that comes into law in the new, from the new session that we have that get, that might affect any, any issues. Even though from my stand of understanding from our town attorney, the towns pretty much have a lot of authority on our individual election processes. So the, that the charter pretty much rules us on how we deal with our own election processes. Does that help?
Yeah, thank you so much. And again, I agree with my colleague Ms. Saunders that there was some good information. Also wanted to know, you did talk about last time and that part of the clerk's responsibility would also be look at the budget. The budget also because there'll probably be some new things that we may have to consider as far as purchases, like new ballot boxes and all that kind of stuff to, you know, securing them and locks and all that, all that. So I wanted to make sure that that was still on your radar.
Yeah, it'll be part of, though actually, what we might do is in this, either at the end of this budget year or part of the 24. So since we're going in a 25 budget, the 25 fiscal year 25, we'll have it? I'm trying to think of my timeline. Yeah, the fiscal year, it's like, since it's every other year. Fiscal year 25, yeah, it'll actually be part of the fiscal year 25 budget to purchase probably the, to purchase the lock boxes. They're not expensive, but we can, we will put the lock boxes in the fiscal year 25 budget so that they're already here before we start. And then in the fiscal 26 budget, we will always budget for the actual election costs because the election occurs in fiscal 26. Does that make sense, Board Member Lundie, from the standpoint of the way our, our budgeting would go? Because we'll probably do any capital purchases in 25. And then at 26, we'll actually do the cost of the election as part of the 26 budget.
Absolutely. So you, when it comes to looking at everything that was submitted to us, because the review of internal procedures from College Park, this is just one suggested reference. How were you envisioning us to do this? Are we gonna have an in-person meeting? You want us to do everything on our own or we do, we need to be together?
No, I think the, no, I think that there'll be, I mean, I think what we'll actually have you to do is that we will have the, the, the new clerk will kind of help to, to shepherd this process. And we'll determine whether you want to do in person or if we're going to maybe share a draft. And then you guys can comment on the draft because I think it's easier to comment on a draft of what this would look like from staff. And then you can make comments and then we can also have that out there for you to make, to, to react to. What we wanted to do is provide you what we had. And now that we've, you've seen it, staff will go back, draft, change information to, let's say into our, and work with the town attorney to make sure it meets our legal guidelines. And send it to you. I think the one other thing about with some of the items we wanted to check is that do you, are you, is from the board's feeling, are you opposed to the way that that ballot oath envelope works? And the election return envelopes are that were attached? Because I believe that will help save us a whole lot of grief changing from an affidavit to actually having the envelope signed and having the oath on the envelope itself. Is there any thoughts on that one?
Hi, everybody. I just wanted to let you know that I'm, this is Judy Sojourner, that I'm here.
Okay, it's nice to see you, Judy. Yeah. But does anybody have a feeling on that issue with the, the changing it to like, you know, looking at, for staff to look into changing it to the actual envelope itself versus having a separate affidavit for that, to kind of keep it easier for you. Because I think that was a, I think that was a, that was a key issue in this last election for you.
I saw that it was all like one, so it could come disconnected, separated and those things. And I thought that that would be very helpful.
Yeah, that's good. As long as it's perforated. Because you need to have both.
Right. Some of the people are, use the envelope itself and have a signature on the envelope. And that's exactly where, and so that, that when you put your ballot in the envelope, you must sign the envelope ballot. And that then says you're agreeing to the affidavit and that's, that keeps you, that keeps it as one piece, which I think is a little cleaner than having that separate piece of paper and then people forgetting to sign it. So, so what we'll do is we will work under that assumption and provide you samples that can, that, and make sure with our town attorney that that conforms with law. And then find us, find something that kind of consolidates that because I believe that affidavit issue was an issue in, in this last election that we wanted to resolve. So that's what staff will bring back is something for that so you can see that. And then from the council, also on the ballot issue, just to, they mentioned that, you know, this College Park uses a printer outside of, in New York. They'd like us to look at a local printer. We will go ahead and look at a local printer and have that, see what they can do for us, do something similar for us. And I'm just trying to make sure if I'm going, let me stop sharing my screen and go right back to that really quick. I think those were really the, the real issues that we wanted to, to kind of make sure that we're okay. Because once we do that, we can then, well, again, as I mentioned, what we can do is we can tell you what month we'll bring each item up to you. As far as the processing of applications, policy, receiving, scanning, the securing of ballots. So we'll bring those maybe to a month. And then that way you'll see a draft and then you can react to it. Does that make sense? And then having an overall, having an overall goal of getting those all done by the fall. But we can also have a spreadsheet that sort of rolls out to say, you know, this is the first pass, is the second pass of some of these things. So that you can know when, you know, what your responsibilities are.
Excuse me, we don't have.
On great work, great work in supporting us and all of us working together. So I really appreciate that as well.
We don't have an election in 24, do we not? No, okay, all right.
Yeah. We don't want to have, yeah, 25 is the, the next scheduled one.
Mr. Joyner, that, I don't know if you had heard, is that so, so part of the budget process is that, you know, in the, in this upcoming budget, we'll probably budget for the purchase of some of the ballot boxes. They are, so if, we'll probably purchase two ballot boxes because it's not a lot of money, but it's about, I think it's, it's gonna be between $2,000 and $3,000 to buy a box that can be attached permanently to two locations. That way, you won't have to determine the locations yet. One I know will be at Town Hall. And we can figure out where the second location will be. If it's at a community center or something, we can, we just need to get permission for all that. But we can work through that issue. And then the second issue would be then in FY '26, we would then deal with any enhanced costs of mailing ballots, the change in paying for postage, that kind of stuff in the 26 budget. Because it would actually be part of the election costs themselves because that'll actually fall in our fiscal year 26, even though it happens in, just in calendar year 25. So I think those are, I mean, those are the major issues. We just want to check in each month to kind of say where we are. Hopefully what we'll do is that for, I'll probably have one or two more meetings with me. I know that I'll be on the call probably as a transition with the new clerk. Once we get the new clerk on board. We wanted to keep these going to make sure that we were communicating where we are. I'm not sure of how much time I will have in the month of January or where staff will have in the month of January to draft any of the policies. But what we can do is if there are new things that come up between now and let's say February, which will probably now shoot for the middle to late February for our next meeting, we will provide draft and we'll put things so that you know when we're looking for comment on them. So that we can get that together as just our next steps. And that's from staff update standpoint.
And so how soon would you be able to get the timeline? Would that be the same time in February?
That's what I was thinking. That's what I'll put together. We can put together something for the timelines for you to look at and for the February meeting. So we'll put together the list of all these with, let's say, the timelines of when they would be due. And then we have a draft of that, like the candidate book that we started, that was started. And I think that's probably one of the first things you may want to look at, is the candidate handbook, that we can get started on that. But it sort of doesn't, I mean, they're all, they're all equally important. But we do have that, I think, to a decent draft standpoint. And we just, what we'll do is we'll send it to our town attorney and ask her to look at it. Sometimes it takes her a little bit more time, so we will send that to her. So she has enough time to kind of look at an initial draft of it. And kind of give us some feedback. And then that way we don't send you out anything that hasn't been looked at legally. But we will send out a list of all the different areas that we want to attack and then put that together for you and then put one list. So that'll be what you can expect for your February meeting. And then, then moving forward, maybe two or three of them, two or three policies a month.
Okay. And then along with the, along with board expectations, that would be included in the timeline, I would ask. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, I know. I was looking at, yes, I do. I was looking at the, the question that was put into the chat by Ms. McCutcheon. It says, was the information sent to the board at the same time as reported? Was the same, was a, I'm sorry, was the information sent to the board the same that was reported at the December council work session? Yes, the information that was sent to the, at the council work session was the same. And then her second question is that, will any changes require charter revisions? We're not sure yet. That's the issue that we want the attorney to look at. And to make sure that if they do or do not require charter revisions. And I think that's the reason why I'd like the attorney, town attorney to look at the actual candidate information. If we make any changes to a candidate handbook or a candidate thing, to make sure that's there.
And I had a follow-up question and please forgive me if I did, if I missed it in everything that was sent to us. Did those, did what you send us from College Park include a day of election procedures for receipt, um, delivery and receipt of absentee ballots? Did it include?
Yeah, that's part of what, that's what part of those things go through is that, is that it kind of delineates, how do you accept absentee ballots? How does it, that's why, that's the reason why there's, we're helpful. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the reason why, that's the reason why when we, when actually I got it, I said, you know, this is kind of the basis that all the stuff that you asked for is there when we talked about with her. And that's why she sent it to us because she said she didn't have any procedures, but she has these like, she basically has these, these, these documents that she updates. She doesn't call them procedures. I think that was the interesting part. And we're calling them more procedures, but they're like kind of working documents that she goes through every time with her Board of Elections Supervisors and they review them after each election. So they're constantly updating them. So I, I mean, I think that's the, that's the, that's what we would probably want to see the board do. And we'll probably work with you guys on that throughout the year.
Excuse me. Very detailed.
Michelle, you say that every time that they have an election, they go through those procedures and see if they needed to be updated.
Yes.
So even though they're not called procedures, do they have to go through their town council and get permission to change or revise every time if, if necessary?
I think that's the reason why they're, the reason why they use them as like kind of working documents is that they're not necessarily policies or procedures. They don't conflict with town law or with election law. They're more internal procedures. And so what I would suggest is that we would adopt something similar. We can have the council to bless it, of course. But what they sort of do is they keep these as their sort of working documents as how they will, you know, receive documents, how they move documents around, how they collect ballots. They don't necessarily, they're not necessarily required to be procedures or policies, but they are used, they are basically, they're sheets on how they will do it each time. So I mean, we can take a more formal approach. That is certainly something the council, that you guys can do. And the recommendation that this board can make to the council is that we need this formal approach. I think the reason why they have, they don't do it necessarily is because the nature of some of this stuff has changed with COVID, with technology. So that it constantly kind of changes a little bit.
Mr. Joyner, you, you have something else? I wanted to make another comment.
No, no, no.
Okay. And Happy New Year to you. Okay, so yeah, so I wanted to also, I don't know if it was on your radar, excuse me, town administrator, to look at any possible signage that we may need for, for that day, Election Day. Because you know, that was an issue that we didn't have maybe accurate signage when the office was closed to alert people where they could go to drop off their ballots, not to people, but to put it in a ballot box so that the voter could know that their ballot is secure. So I wanted to know if that, if that was on your radar to look at maybe some official voter signage on Election Day.
So the actual voter boxes and some of that stuff actually has it. And actually when we put out the, it does allow you to put, some of it is solved by the, the way that the, the ballot boxes are. And they say vote here. So, and they have, and part of the collection procedure has day of collection procedures. So that if the Town Hall is closed, like in the standpoint like it was this time, that any ballots or things would be, would be put, could be put in there. And then we've already, we already have, what we will also do as part of our protocols is make sure that for the post office, that we alert the post office the day of the election so that we do not have a delivery issue. So that should be, that should be okay. But I do, do, do get what you're saying. I think that you'll see with the visibility of some of these boxes. And I think that's what we will engage with this committee on. Is when we're buying our voter boxes, that they are, that they're prominent and you see them. And they say where to vote. Do you know what I'm saying? Where, where, where this process is. And then the policies then will say, did anybody check the mail? Did anybody check the box? Because the, the policy itself, that's what they have is that they actually have where, when somebody checks the box, they write down their initials, they, you go back, they count, they know what, and then those are all secured. Votes are secure. And that, that's one of those procedures or, let's say, techniques, let's say that is, that's done every time.
Okay, so now, you keep saying stuff that made me think of other stuff. Okay, so, so when, so when they're counting, so they're not taking anything out, the, the machine automatically, whatever these boxes were, when they dropped, it's automatically counting. You can see the count? Or do you mean somebody actually has to open it up and go in there and count them physically? Or do you mean somebody actually has to open it up and go, and go in there and count them physically, then put them back in? I hope that's not what we're saying.
You, every time when we physically, there, they actually have physical boxes that, and that's what everybody's using, is a physical boat boxes. They're not, they're not, they're not scanner, they're gonna put them in, because you're gonna have to as the, the body, you're gonna have to certify all absentee ballots together. All mail-in, whatever we're gonna, what is it called? We're not calling, um, they're called absentee, but they're not called absentee anymore. They're called walk-in or mail-in, um, they're not called, they're whatever the, the new term is, but those, those day of ballots have to be treated as day of or whatever ballots. Um, so there's a process for that. And what, um, we have to, we have a secure box currently, which we can upgrade within the town hall for ballots that are received. So if they're mailed in, we put them in a locked box and, eh, for the clerk does, already has that. Plus, if they are received in the locked box out, you know, the one that's outside, that's in a, a public area. But those are things that you can review with how you're going to do that procedure. Does that make sense?
Alright, I'm wrapping my mind around that. Okay, fine, thank you.
Yeah, I said, I, I think, I think it's gonna, I, I hate to get into the technicalities of it right now, because I think it's something that we're gonna have to look at and you're gonna have to go step by step through it. Like, we'll, we'll write up a, you know, we'll write up a policy and, um, to answer Susan McCutcheon's, given our controversy in the past several years, perhaps a more formal approach. In fact, the lack of vital formal procedures led to some controversies, which is why the charter itself was amended several years ago. I, we agree. What I'm saying is that I'm not trying to say loosey-goosey, I'm just saying that there will be procedures for each step of it. You'll just need to kind of, I don't want to answer all those right now, because you'll need to go through step by step by step. And you're going to have to say how you're going to accept and things like that, and, and how, who will open the box? Who won't open the box? How often is the box checked? Is the box, that, is an outside box checked? Once a week? Is it not checked until the day before the election? That's things that you will make a recommendation on. Does that make sense? Versus me trying to tell you, be prescriptive on it at this point. I think that's what this, this group will look at and will get more data to say, if there's a locked box outside, should it be checked? Once every week? That's what College Park is doing. I believe they have it, where they're checking it a certain number of days and they're going, collecting them and then putting them in an inside locked box. So they're being transported.
That makes sense, because that was, because some people are gonna drop stuff off before Election Day. And, um, so, right, and so that was one of my little A, B, C, D, E, F, G. And so you did cover, cover that, so I appreciate that as we walk through it, because we'd be here all day.
Right, I think, and that's the thing, is like, I think that that's what you'll do at each one of these steps. You're gonna go through and you're gonna say, this is what you're gonna be doing. Um, I was referring to the earlier discussion, not the locked boxes, but that works too. Okay. I just want to make sure that's, um, just, um, yeah, I think that that's where we're, we'd like to, um, is like, I think the working policy issue, I mean, the council can definitely adopt formal policies. It's just more the fact that some, some boards of election have found it easier to be able to have day of procedures for some of these things. I don't know if everything has to be a formal policy. Um, I think that you, but you'll need some day of procedures that'll make it, I think you need something. Versus every time that, you know, someone comes in and you say, okay, this is what we're gonna do this year. This is what we're doing this year, you know?
Well, hopefully, um, excuse me, hopefully that everything will be in place so we can notify the public that we have lock boxes available for them to drop their ballots. And that will maybe negate even the post office being, even though, and I understand we should notify the post office, but hopefully that will relieve the post office from any delivery of any last minute ballots, hopefully.
I think what we can do, and I'm glad that we have Ray, um, Ray on board, is that we, we can get this out on social media. We can put this out to say we've got the information and we can also share information on the voting process a little bit more transparently. Um, and I think that that's something that we'll also make sure that we are, we are informing people of our voting process.
Yes, okay.
And, and I do like what, um, one of our residents is saying here about the checklist. I think for each process, that would be very helpful. Um, I know as the last town administrator, um, you know, left, that we did have that, you know, at the, at the backend, so it would be good to have that throughout the process. Because what we're doing right now, you guys, is very important. Uh, for the future of all elections that's gonna happen in this town. And so we are, we, I'm not taking it for granted, what we are doing here, um, collaboratively. So I just wanted to put that out there for the record.
Appreciate it. Um, so that's where we are for the month of January. I think that the only other stuff that's left was just if there's any other general discussion. And then we'll eat, figure out the meeting date for the next meeting. I know that we sort of, I, I'd like to be able to figure out if a, I mean, is this time working or is it, do we need a, a later time or things like that? Is this okay?
Yeah, when I know in advance this time works, I just need to know in advance, and it can be in person or
Yeah, this is good time, as long as my phone is working.
Yeah, right, but I don't, I, really for me, it's a good time as well. It's like my colleague says, Ms. Sanders, as long as I'm giving a notice in advance and in person or virtual. But I think we need, when we come together to work on this stuff, we need to be together in front of each other, so we can actually do some stuff. Because this is too important to just be having everything virtual.
So then, if I'm looking at meeting dates, then is a Tuesday or Wednesday? Wednesdays are better.
And stays are great, yeah.
Wednesdays are better. The seventh of February would be about a month from now. It would be a little bit helpful for me if we could either do the seventh or the twenty-first, because the twenty-first would, perhaps I could then give you a little bit more, um, status on where the clerk position is, um, if that makes sense, that Wednesday, the twenty-first, if that works.
Right now it does on my calendar, to check with other colleagues. Yeah, right now it works for me. Three thirty, correct? Three o'clock, which one? Three thirty?
Three thirty, if that works for everybody.
Send it out to the current chair and everybody, just to confirm. Yeah.
So what we'll do is I will have, um, Monty and we'll draft it with the, for you guys. I'll send, we'll send out a, um, I'll send that out to, I'll have, have that drafted and sent out to everyone for this, the twenty-first at three thirty. I'll put a, probably put a hold on it now, so that everybody then has it, and then I'll send it to everybody and then we'll, and this will be, we'll have it tentatively as a teams. And then if they, we need to, um, if we need to reschedule it in person, we can. I just want to make sure that we just hold the team so that we have the time.
Yeah, only reason why I want to push the in-person, because this is a working meeting. And we need to be in front of each other and, right, you know, we need to work. It's kind of hard to do this online, because you're switching back and forth in document computer. This setting doesn't allow for that, really.
Okay, we can then set it up so that you can come in person, but what we'll do is we'll focus it down to one item. That way you can then work on the one item versus it being, but we want to present all the documents, if that makes sense.
That works in this aspect, that works, yeah.
Now, so I'll check in with the chair and I'll send that out to you guys as a hold now. Um, so that we can move with it. Is there any other information for the good of the order for this, uh, board right now?
No, not for me.
No, I think I'm good. Oh, I just want to, um, say for the record in the chat, as I was turning off the mic, I think I hit an emoji and I think I made a laugh. Mean to. I was trying to get off mute. Oh, okay, good. I just didn't want someone to think I thought that they was being funny. But no, I think that in-person is great, because then we can spread out the documents and really look and discuss it and go through this and grapple it. So I think that that's a great idea.
Alright, so what we'll do is we'll have a printed, I, I'm assuming you guys would prefer printed, um, stuff as well. So we'll email it and we'll have it printed, and that way you can have a, a little book where you can see and take with stuff with you. Okay. Alright, so what we'll do is do that. The twenty-first gives us a little bit more time to put that together, so I will send it for the twenty-first. Um, you'll get something from us very shortly about the twenty-first, so that we can keep it moving. And then it'll probably, probably get either the handbook, if the county town attorney has had a chance to review it, or at least one of these, some, one or two of these checklist procedures, so that we can go through them. We just figure out which one she can get to first. Okay?
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome. Happy Wednesday, everybody. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Christmas and
You too. And you too, um, um, town attorney. I see you on there.
Take care, everyone. Thank you for, it's great to hear this. Thank you.
Alrighty, bye-bye.
Take care.